Good evening and welcome to our May eighth Board of Selectmen meeting. As we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we reread the agenda, I'd like to welcome back Mr. Singer, back to Select Board, and I'd like to welcome Ms. Spiewack.
Thank you. Elections.
All right, we'll start our meeting with the reading of the agenda. We'll go over our April twenty-fourth meeting minutes. We'll then move on to community relations, announcements in open form. We'll then move on to appointments and resignations, under which we have one item, and that is the appointments for the Stipend Advisory Committee. We'll then move to scheduled appointments. We have a six forty-five scheduled appointment for a public hearing for Chapter sixty-one King Road, and a seven o'clock appointment for the Old Home Day about serving alcohol. Under new business, we have several items. Number one is a National Grid poll petition process. Number two is an overlay tax enforcement and tax recapitulation policies. Number three is a two thousand eighteen scholarship award. Number four is about traffic details, and number five is the reorganization of the board. Under old business, we have three items. Number one is an update on toll roads that are held in town. Number two is the senior center about fires opens, which will be passed over. If anyone has any objections on that, please let me know. And then number three is the annual town meeting for the town meeting warrant with motions. We'll then move on to committee reports, then the student select persons' report, then the town administrators' report, and then finally, any other business unknown at the time of posting, and our next regular meeting will be May twenty-second. And then we will go into executive session and exit executive session solely for the purpose of adjournment. And with that, what are the board's wishes with our April twenty-fourth meeting minutes?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath.
I make a motion that we approve the April twenty-fourth meeting minutes as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any absences?
If one.
Thank you. Chair votes aye, motion passes with four ayes and one abstention. Now move on to announcements. Town meeting will be held Monday, May twenty-first, at seven PM at the Charlton Middle School. This message is from the office of the town clerk. Reminder, if you have not licensed your dog for two thousand and eighteen, please do as soon as possible as not to incur a fifty dollar violation. Please return any two thousand and eighteen census forms now if you haven't sent it in yet. The town hall will be closed on Monday, May twentieth, in observance of Memorial Day. The town hall will also be closed on Wednesday, June sixth, from nine AM to one PM to provide staff with Alice training. With that, are there any other announcements? Is anyone here for open forum? Seeing none, we'll move into our first item under appointments or resignations, and that's the appointment for the Stipend Advisory Committee. Ms. Craver?
I'm having a problem with my...
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm happy to read that while you sort that out.
Okay. At the board's April tenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, you inform the Stipend Advisory Committee, which will review stipends and bring back recommendations to the board for the next annual town meeting, which will consist of two current board committee commission members, three citizens at large, one member of the or appointed by the Personnel Board and the Human Services Director. Attached is a talent bank form from Richard Vaughn. Seeking appointment to this committee, I would recommend the board make the appointment as one of the current board and committee member commission members. The openings have been placed on cable and the town's website.
Thank you, Ms. Craver. What are the board's wishes with appointing Mr. Vaughn?
Through the chair.
Ms. Noble.
I would make a motion that we appoint Richard Vaughn to the Stipend Advisory Committee.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. I know that Ms. Jordan Evans was also interested in that committee. I told her to reach out to you.
Okay. Great.
We're now move, uh, we are early for our six forty-five poll hearing, so if there's no objections, I'd like to move to new business.
I'm a little stuck here with the...
I can help read...
I apologize, but I'm, this isn't one that I've gone into before, and it seems to be having a little trouble. At your last meeting, the board opened the hearing for the request to remove the property from Chapter sixty-one A. It has been requested to postpone for two weeks.
So that's our scheduled appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
They've asked to postpone for two weeks.
Okay.
So I think you can do that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, um, do we need to take any action on that, Ms. Craver?
Sorry, ma'am.
That's okay.
Do we...
Ms. Craver, do we have to take any action on that, or just not do anything for...
Make a motion to postpone for two weeks.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion on the motion to continue on, continue the Chapter sixty-one discussion of King Road next two weeks? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, since we are very early for the seven o'clock, I'd like to move on to new business, and which item number one is the National Grid poll hearing process. On page thirty-eight for us.
Okay.
Ms. Craver?
At the board's January sixteenth meeting, Kevin Shaughnessy from National Grid provided an update on National Grid's programs and storm communications. He also spoke of a proposed change to the poll petition process, which became effective May thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. I forwarded you communication that I received from him. He states that "A recent review of their process for obtaining permission for installing new utility polls. In the public way, the poll petition indicates an opportunity to reduce their costs and timelines associated with this practice. Because this also potentially means a change in the National Grid representation at the poll petition hearings, they are providing you with some background and would ask for your consideration of changes. The background is, currently, a National Grid representative attends each poll petition hearing to address any concerns that surface at the hearing with the goal of gaining approval of the poll petition. For poll petition hearings that do not occur during regular business hours, there is an added cost for the representative to attend the hearing. Most of the hearings are held after regular business hours; these costs add up. If a petition is denied and has to be rescheduled to another date, not only is the cost for the representative to return to the second hearing doubled, often a customer's project is delayed while the poll location is redesigned and until the petition can be rescheduled. If National Grid can obtain approval without a representative needed at these hearings, the associated costs and delays can be eliminated to the benefit of all National Grid customers. Two years ago, they realized that a number of the poll petitions in central and western Mass, almost half, were being denied, resulting in additional costs and time delays, not only to redesign the poll location, but also for their rep to return to another hearing for the same petition. They began a concerted effort to understand the reasons and rectify this issue. The primary reasons the petitions are denied: the abutters express concerns regarding the proposed poll location; when these concerns can't be satisfactorily addressed at the hearing, the petition is denied; or the DPW and/or highway superintendent have an issue with the proposed poll location. The proximity of the poll state to the road is typically an issue, so the petition is denied and the job has to be redesigned. What they have learned, the above concerns can be addressed by having the National Grid designer for each project engage as many abutters as possible, responsive to National Grid outreach and/or the DPW highway superintendent in the design process. This eliminates multiple designs. If they ensure that as many abutters and DPW superintendent, the highway superintendent concerns are as possible, are addressed prior to the hearing, it typically eliminates multiple hearings for the same project. In fact, they believe it also eliminates the need for a National Grid rep to appear at the hearing at all, and therefore, the associated costs for doing so. It greatly will streamline the process. Since they implemented the practice of engaging abutters and the highway superintendents prior to the hearing, they have had significant increase in their poll petition approval rate on the first try. The tracking results are as listed below. The number of petitions since March two thousand and sixteen was two hundred and seventy; the number of first try petitions approved were two hundred and sixty-two, which is ninety-seven percent. They propose that they maintain, if not improve, their approval rating through continued focus on the input of abutters and the highway superintendents in advance of the petition hearings. In the rare instance where the design has discussed, designer has discussed the poll with the abutter and all options have been exhausted without completely resolving the abutters' concerns, the company will ensure a designer attends the hearing to inform the select board members of their efforts. Their community manager will be contacting us to determine if the selectmen are agreeable to this proposed approach, i.e. having the National Grid designer resolve any abutter and/or highway superintendent concerns prior to the poll hearing, so that attendance at the hearing is not necessary. If, despite their efforts, all concerns are not available to be addressed prior to the hearing, leaving the option open for a National Grid representative to attend the hearing to inform the select board members of our efforts. It's their hope that you will allow them to implement this cost and time savings measure, what's the board's wishes, so just also a little piece. If you remember, you changed your policy to require that a poll representative be here. So I think that this is a good compromise, and if there's a, if you will consider allowing them not to be here, then if there's a problem, we certainly could rein, we could reinstate that. I did have a, an email back from the highway superintendent, and he seems to think that this process would help streamline.
Yeah. It, it seems like this, you know, they should be reaching out before coming to a hearing. It just makes, seems like common sense. And it also seems like there's safeguards in place if someone came with a complaint or if they were male of complaint, that we could still address it.
Mm-hmm. You would address it. They would be here if they know that there's a problem.
Yep.
And if there's a problem and the representative, then it just gets postponed.
And what...
I, I believe you forwarded that email to all of us? I did. Yes. I read that.
So what are the board's wishes with adopting, implementing the policies as requested?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in two seconds. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. Now move on to item number two under new business, as we're still early for our seven o'clock appointment, the overlay for the tax enforcement and tax recapitulation policies.
Which page?
Uh, that is page number forty-five.
The finance team is recommending the board approve the following three policies. Overlay policy, this policy will ensure the proper treatment of the overlay account. This policy sets guidelines for determining, determining the annual overlay amount in the town's budget and for deciding whether an overlay balance can be certified as surplus. The allowance for the abatements and exemptions, commonly referred to as the overlay, is in an account to offset anticipated abatements and exemptions, and the committed real and private, uh, personal property taxes. The account may also be charged in the event property taxes are deemed to be uncollectible. Effective November seventh, two thousand and sixteen, the Municipal Modernization Act provides for a single overlay account. Previously, a community had to maintain separate overlay reserves for each fiscal year and could not use the surplus from one year to cover another year's deficit without a multi-step process involving the assessors, accounting officer, and local legislative body, meaning going to town meeting. However, the act now allows all existing overlay balances to be transferred to a single account. Although this policy treats overlay as a single account to continue historical information and facilitate reconciliations, the town accountant may elect to maintain subsidiary ledgers by levy year for the overlay balances. That's the overlay policy. For the tax enforcement policy, enforcement, this policy will provide guidance for equitably enforcing tax obligations and set expectations for both the town and taxpayers. It clearly defines when and how the town will transition unpaid property taxes from tax title to foreclosure. It is in the best interest of the town of Charlton and its residents that property taxes be paid when due. The town budget is set in anticipation of the collection of taxes, and taxes not paid by some property owners shift the cost burden onto others. The town recognizes that individuals may go through periods of financial difficulty, but any taxpayer who becomes delinquent will be encouraged to find alternate resources to pay in full as soon as possible. The tax recap, um, the purpose of this policy is to ensure the town's timely and appropriately charges taxes to property owners in support of the annual budget. It sets forth the roles, responsibilities, and deadlines associated with the tax recap process. A timely and accurate annual recap helps ensure the town complies with the state statutes, avoids overwork, uh, workflow disruptions in the town's financial policies, offices, and averts a cash shortfall and temporary borrowing costs. These procedures are already in place, and the policies will enforce them. I would recommend the board approve all three policies as presented, and just as a final note, as you remember, we had DOR come in and they made recommendations, and these are the policies coming from those recommendations. And I'd like to thank the finance director and the finance team for working on putting these together. We have sent them out to the department heads for review and comment. We've adjusted those, and now they're before you tonight.
It's great. We're seeing a lot of, a lot of work come out from the finance team, so I'm really glad to have such very capable leaders. So, thank you, and thank, thank that team. But what are the board's wishes of approving the three policies as presented?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath.
I make a motion that we approve all three policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you. A motion's second. Is there any discussion on the, on the motion?
No, just like to thank the finance team for putting this together. They've done an exemplary job.
Absolutely. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. We're still early, so item number three under new business, Nancy two thousand and eighteen scholarship award on page number fifty-six.
Yes. The scholarships awarded by the board of selectmen are the Jesse Smith, Namaya Stone, and Edwin Phillips Cooking Fund. The Colby Scholarship recipient is chosen by the Colby family members. Two scholarship applications have been received. The application for the Jesse Smith Scholarship qualifies as they are within the district guidelines of the scholarship. The application received for the Namaya Stone Scholarship does not qualify, as they do not live within the district designated, therefore, they cannot be considered. Each application is numbered and reviewed, and then, and when received and placed on your desk in the office for your review. As in the past, when the motion is made to award the scholarship, the student name is not revealed. The motion should be made to include the number of the applicant. This year, we would like to ask the board to award the Jesse Smith Scholarship in the amount of two hundred dollars. The award is based on the intent, on the interest earned for each scholarship. The scholarship will be awarded at the student, um, to the student at their graduation ceremony.
And we'll handle that before we get to the second part of that. So now would entertain a motion for, or awarding the Jesse Smith Scholarship?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I move that the board of selectmen award the twenty eighteen Jesse Smith Scholarship to applicant number one in the amount of two hundred dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. And then the second part, Ms. Craver?
Yes, once awarded, we will notify the school of the award. Also, Chairman Safarovich asks that the board discuss how the award is given. Currently, the student must complete the first semester in college and provide the office with a copy of their grades. Upon receiving their grades, the office sends the check directly to the college. There is no policy for this, it's just been the process that's been in place. Chairman Safarovich would like the board to consider giving the check, check directly to the student. Books and supplies are expensive, and they could use these funds to help purchase books or other items needed for classes. I would recommend that if the board changes the policy, the process, that the student provide proof to the office that they are registered and to attend prior to us releasing the funds. What is the board's wishes?
Thank you, Ms. Craver. Mr. Singer?
Um, so I, I agree with the chair. I think it is tough on kids, especially right up front, because they have to incur the cost. So I would support that, and I would like to just make that change, obviously, based upon the fact that they can show that they are enrolled and everything else.
Right.
But I think that does provide better help to the student when they have to pay the cost upfront.
Yeah. I remember back starting out, a fairly long time ago now, that it was as hard, and having some scholarships right at graduation really helped to fray some of those costs.
Well, as, as a current college student, a continuing college student, I can tell you the cost of nothing has gone down.
Yeah.
Nothing. And, and textbooks are quite costly. Sometimes that cost is so much that is, it is over burdensome, and I have unfortunately seen students start class without their textbooks, because they don't have the money. So yeah, I would fully support this.
So what is, uh, Ms. Spiewack?
Through the chair. I, I understand where you're coming from, but it really isn't a best practice to write a check out to the student. I would recommend we ask them to provide proof that they're, from the bursar's office, and then issue the check to the college.
So proof that they're paying for expenses?
That they're gonna be going to college, yeah.
Yeah. I think included in that is also proof that the office that they're registered and, uh, because you have to show that you're attending school.
But they're...
Then they're accepted. So what are the board's wishes then on creating a policy?
Trying to think what to write words.
So, but if, we're still gonna write the check out to the student? That's highly unusual, that's all.
I remember back...
Being on scholarship things.
Back...
You've been on the school committee, right?
Yeah. Usually, if you look, it's usually written out to the college.
I've, um, not, not to disagree, I've seen it done both ways. I've, I've received scholarships through the university, and also received scholarships, and they've been given directly to, to the student, so that the student can use the scholarship funds for classes, for books, or for living expenses, so that they can continue to go to college.
Yeah. And, and it, the student takes time to actually apply for one of these scholarships, is we're always, and to be honest, we're hurting for applicants, and, and on top of that is the fairly arbitrary geographic restrictions on these scholarships as well.
And to the point Ms. Noble made, I've watched them actually hand checks to students at the graduation for some scholarships, so it does happen both ways.
It does.
Does the students or students selectmen have any opinion?
Ms. Kornowski, do you have any opinions as, as someone who is entering that world in their future?
Nothing like putting you on the spot.
And also, it, don't be ever, you know, if you have any questions or, or sage wisdom, please never hesitate.
I think that, like, I've, I've also seen it done both ways, but I feel like that's a little bit informal, just handing a student a check, and I think that a process that, like, to go through, it doesn't necessarily have to be what Ms. Spiewack mentioned, but something a little bit more formal than handing them a check on behalf of the selectmen would probably be better.
And right now, it's being proposed, and one of the recommendations is that they have to show proof to our office that they are registered and plan to attend school.
Yeah.
So, the thought, um, to, to her point as well, at, at some high school graduations, I think even in Shepherd Hill, I've watched them hand scholarships, they call up the recipients and they give them the scholarship.
It's like, it's like awards night or something, where they give every, all the scholarships out.
They actually did it at graduation, which is why ours is so long. Uh, they're a long graduation ceremony. Oh, yeah. But maybe we could do it where it is a formal thing, they have to show proof that they're enrolled, and then it's given to them by the school at graduation.
Yep.
When they're on the stage getting it.
Yeah.
That way, they still have it before they go to school, they can use it towards the school or books. It's a formal process. They're getting it at graduation from the school when they're called on stage before everybody. Which is also a nice recognition, because it's before everybody.
Yeah, it is a nice, it is a nice way to recognize the hard work in applying for the scholarship.
Does the board wish to take any specific action on this item?
Well, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Singer?
I'll throw it out there then. So I, I would move that, uh, we follow the practice just outlined for that scholarship, that we would award it to the student, um, through the school, to be awarded at graduation on stage, as long as that school can, prior to that, show proof of enrollment in the school and that they qualify to receive the scholarship. Does that seem to cross all the...
So would it be that they would get the announcement letter handed to them, and then they would just come in and show us proof, and then we'd give them the check? Or are you trying to say, do the check then?
I, I think that would probably be, probably be best to do it that way.
Scholarship letter.
We'd give them a start scholarship letter at graduation, and then, uh, when they come in with their credentials saying that they've been accepted at such and, such and such a school, and they are enrolled, then we would turn over the money to them.
Yes, because the, the registration would have to be stamped by the bursar.
Right.
It would have to have that official bursar stamp on it. Okay.
Okay. So there's some checks and balances.
So as, as, your motion as recommended, as modified by Ms. Craver?
I think, and the rest of the board.
Sounds good.
I'll second.
Motion's second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. Streamline a little bit, help out the student. Uh, so before we get into traffic details, it's now seven o'clock, and if, with the board's indulg, uh, board's indul, indulgment, to go back to our seven o'clock appointment for the Old Home Day Committee about serving alcohol, which is on page thirty-five. Just signed out of my... Ms. Craver?
I've been aware, uh, made aware that there's an application in process from the Old Home Day Race Committee for a special license to serve alcohol during Old Home Day to runners over the age of twenty-one. Before the application is received in the office, the board may wish to have a conversation about allowing or incorporating alcohol into Charlton's Old Home Day events. To my knowledge, alcohol has not been, um, has never been allowed at Old Home Day during any of the events. The Old Home Day Race Committee is not a committee appointed by the board, but it works with the Old Home Day Committee to set the race. Charlton has a town bylaw regarding alcohol on town property, which states Chapter one oh five, section one oh five, one, consumption or possession of open container on town property. No person shall consume any alcoholic beverage, nor shall he or she possess or have under his or her control any open alcoholic beverage containers on any town-owned or controlled place or public way unless a permit therefore has been previously been secured from the board of selectmen. I bring this to you as there are many questions that need to be answered and ask the board for guidance, and the possibility of setting some policies for the Old Home Day if needed. The definition of Old Home Day as posted on the town website is, Old Home Day is an event held in Charlton, Massachusetts on Labor Day weekend at the end of each summer. Established in eighteen ninety-seven, the event brings friends, neighbors, family, and visitors together with a true community spirit. It is a tradition begun, uh, begun over a hundred and twenty years ago, when the citizens of Charlton gathered at the sum, end of summer, before the beginning of fall harvest, and on the onset of winter. The essence of Old Home Day consists of a tradition, which reminds us all that we are part of a community. It offers a chance for folks to join and reflect on the important things required to be a citizen here in a small town of Massachusetts. This day celebrates the town, the people, and the past, and it's so much fun. The entertainment in many of the activities vary from year to year, but are free of charge. It is a day filled with excite, exciting entertainment, traditional events, friendship, and fun to the residents of Charlton, neighboring towns, extended families, acquaintances, and anyone who wants to know what Charlton really is about. Because this would be the first time for this type of request, I would ask that you consider the following questions, um, and there's, there's several of them here, if you want me to read them by Ken.
Uh, yes, please. No? I, I think they're, they're good to start discussion, just things we do have to answer.
I, I have read them already.
Right. Also, for the people at home?
All right.
And in the audience?
Some of the questions that, that we just put together, and again, before I do this, I want to say that, you know, we're not pro or con, um, we don't have any feelings either way from our office. We're looking at direction, and we want to make sure that the board fully considers, and, and not wait until there's someone before you to have this conversation. So, um, I did have a conversation with the actual applicant to say, we're not doing this, uh, you, we're not bringing this forward for the conversation, um, because of one person, but it's just, it's a process. So, let me go through. If you allow one alcohol vendor, do you plan on making the opportunity available to anyone who wishes to rent space during the event? If you allow alcohol at town events, what criteria would you have for the requesting party to get a one-day license? What liability would the town have, should it allow alcohol on town property during this event? What would be the liability for the town if it is on private property, but allowed at town events such as Old Home Day, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Little League par- parade? What requirements would you have regarding the location? Is the center of downtown appropriate during events that include parades? Will this be say, a safe setting for families and children? Can Old Home Day sponsor an event with alcohol? If not, what groups would be allowed, vendors, et cetera? If alcohol is limited to a closed group only, what would be the process to turn others away since it's a public event? How will complaints from others attending Old Home Day and not be allowed to purchase any alcohol be handled? And where does the money raised from the, uh, event sponsored by the committee go? What ramifications will the town have if this option is not open to all that apply? I'm not for or against adding alcohol to public events, but I wanna make sure you have an opportunity to consider future outcomes of approving an application before you or the Old Home Day have a clear policy on how future events. Including the one in process that will be handled. If the board should allow the Old Home Day Committee to allow alcohol this year without a policy, you, um, could be required to allow any others to apply in the future. This is completely the board's decision, I would ask the board for direction.
Thank you, Ms. Craver.
You're welcome. And I, I do also wanna just say, um, that in my conversation with different people with, with the applicant, they've actually done this before in another town. Um, and the town has been accepting of a beer garden, and it actually acted as a fundraiser, and I believe the person told me that they had actually raised the money for their fireworks that way. So, um, you know, it's, it's viable, and it's, um, it's not something that you don't have to do, but certainly wanted to have a conversation.
Absolutely, I just, I do wanna pre- preface this discussion that I, I don't intend to come out here with a, a full policy accepted. You know, we still have some research we need to do, look at the towns that Ms. Craver just, Ms. Craver just mentioned, uh, about looking to see what they have for language and policies and their, uh, their successes and stumbling blocks. So with that, I'll open up discussion to the board.
Through the chair.
Ms. Noble?
It's my understanding, after having discussions with individuals on the Old Home Day Committee, that this particular vendor would be offering one beverage. To runners over the age of twenty-one who complete the race in the morning, and that would be all. I'm not aware that they're gonna be doing anything over and above that, other than offering the one beverage in an enclosed area with police presence.
On private property, right?
On private property, to runners over the age of twenty-one. That, that was my understanding.
So, uh, and one thing to think about is what we want for, uh, cause obviously like, it's treating this almost like a special liquor license request.
Yes.
About making sure we, we, we have that you have a pro- a proposed plan, that the people who are serving alcohol be tip certified, uh, maybe in su- such an event like this, you have some sort of detail officer. Or, or someone there to, uh, to ma- to ensure, uh, compliance.
Yep.
Mr. Singer?
Uh, sorry, I'm not opposed to it, I, I agree with Ms. Noble, a lot of the races I run, I run because there's a carrot at the end of the stick. So, that being, which is usually a pint, so that being said, my only concerns here would be questions about number three, which is the liability, because that's a town event. And, uh, and where, and how the money goes to the committee, but other than that, I, I don't, like Ms. Noble, I see no reason we would treat this any differently than any other license with the same requirements.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I feel exactly the same way as my two fellow board members.
Through the chair.
Ms. Be- Ms. Spewack?
I too feel the same way, I know other towns, um, do things like have liability disclaimer clauses, um, so.
So what?
Something to look at, we can model after what other towns are doing.
So what is, so if we were to have, as we usually do at the Jocelyn Camp, we issue a special one-day liquor license. How liable are we with that usually? Cause I know we do our due diligence by sending it to the, you know, the people who know what they're doing, the police chief, fire chief, the, um, building inspector.
Yep, um, I don't believe you have liability, it, but it's also not an, an event you're sponsoring.
So can we just?
I think that would be what would be the difference.
I, I imagine that you could, I could assess more stringent, uh, regulations on that, so like certain, um, uh, height for fences, if it was out, outdoor beer garden, or, or what have you.
Perhaps, the chief is here, perhaps he might have some ideas, some thoughts.
I'm sorry ma'am, I missed the tail end of that. I guess they're the chief.
He's putting you on the spot regarding alcohol.
Thank you Chief Maxfield.
I think you may have some, they were actually talking about any stipulations that might be considered at a town event, so I thought you might have some.
Especially, uh, in relation to, uh, to a private, a, a normal one, a normal special one-day liquor license, what are some things you might see different for a town event?
So, we do this, St. Joe's does it three or four times a year, the Beagle Club does it a few times a year, um, essentially, a Charlton optical is a private property, they're gonna fence it off. Um, so I, I don't think that there's any liability for the town, now, sh- should somebody step out onto the sidewalk, uh, which that, I, I don't see happening in this instance, but let's say they did. Then they would be subject to, uh, the town bylaws and, uh, chapter one thirty-eight, uh, you know, open contain law, kinda thing, but, um, but you issue one-day licenses to, you know, uh, for a lot of other people to do, you know, similar things, so, um, I, I don't see it an issue.
So if the Board of Selectmen are sponsoring the event, does it affect the liability laws, or no?
No, th- this would be, um, they, they appoint a committee, they, they run the event, but they would issue a special license, um, to the applicant, uh, for, uh, to s- to serve on private property. You know, under chapter one thirty-eight, so.
May I ask a question?
Ms. Noble?
Um, who submitted the application?
Uh, so we're, we're, we are at this point talking about in general.
I'm just curious. Okay, in general, okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
The, the, the general policy of how we want to approach it.
Okay.
And, and any part of that discussion would be a town and, um, a town-sponsored event.
Right.
And the application being part of.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, a, a application did spur the conversation, but this conversation is about how we want to approach it.
I think, uh, you have a good point, because so if, um, I wanna say another organization. But if there's another organization that has a tent, and then they put in, they get their tent, and then they come here for a one-day alcohol license. Do you, would you see that different than if it's on private property versus?
Town property.
Property.
I, I would, I would say most likely.
So you would not use the?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
Absolutely, I, I would view that, if, if somebody wants to have a, a beer tent that's gonna be on private property, that's my own feeling. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, um, just because the, I don't believe the town wants that liability, and I, I personally don't wanna be responsible for it.
Right, I know that, uh, there's some members from the Old Home Day Committee here, and there's also general public, uh, anyone who has any discussion or questions are welcome to come forward and do so, pass. Hello?
Ah, that's horrible.
Uh, so again, um, this is a discussion on a general policy, nothing, there's no speci- not discussion on specific applications, uh, but, and, uh, before we speak, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sue Malley, I am the race director along with my husband for the Charlton Old Home Day road, road race. So, um, so specifically for the, sorry, for the road race, um, we have waivers of liability just running the road race. And we would also have a waiver of liability that each runner would sign that, almost like a hold harmless agreement. Even though it's still going to be on private property, um, there's a, there would be entrance and exit, there would be, um, pre-registered runners, there's all different, um, ways that we're going to restrict this. There will be somebody posted at the entrance and the exit, there'll be a police detail.
So, we're, we're, uh, that's a good, uh, it's a good case study for us, but we're also, this, this is one application? How do we, uh, approach other applications in the future, so that we're here to set the policy on how we wanna approach it at a larger scale? Does that make sense?
This, I, I don't think, and maybe I'm wrong, I'm not an attorney, um, but I don't think the board is liable for this, because it's, is that what part of the discussion?
Uh, that, that's, that's a small part of the discussion, there's just how we want to approach it equitably and safely.
Well, I think, well, it's, I think there's a bunch of things that'll.
Ms. Malley, can you please identify yourself before you, yeah?
Peter Malley, I'm also on the, uh, Old Home Day Race Committee, um, the, um, oh, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good, thank you. Thank you. The, I think one of the big things is, it's on private property, we're also limiting like one pour, and nobody's able to purchase alcohol.
Right.
That's, I think, the big thing, um, and one of the things is we're keeping away from private pro- um, from town property, I think that's very important. Uh, that's why we wanna fence off that whole area with a police detail.
Right.
You know, tip certification, um, so, you know, I understand all the points of.
Right.
No alcohol, it, you know, Old Home Day, I can understand all that, but we're trying to avoid all that, the big important thing I think is one fo- one pour, I know Treehouse wants to get involved a little bit more. You know, I, I don't know if they need any more awareness than they already have. But, um, I think it's, um, I think it's, it's very important that they get, they get somewhat more involved in Old Home Day, I think it's pretty important, they're a great business.
Absolutely, and again, tonight, we're not discussing any specific applications, we're discussing the, the policy as a whole.
So we also would have a start, and start, uh, start and stop time for that too, so we have a limited amount, so it's not just five hundred people, a thousand people coming in. So there's a controlled number, if that also helps.
So again, we're not talking about any specific applications, so.
But it is good to use as a model.
It's a, it's a good, right.
As long as we're not. Good to know that there's a beginning and an end.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, also the timeframe that we're doing it as keeps it away from the, like, er, like, a, a bunch of people I discussed with were, who were kinda making me aware of the parade. But that's not till four o'clock, where is the area of time is what, eleven thirty?
Eleven thirty to one P.M.
To one, to an hour and a half.
And that's, I think, that's, that's a great, uh.
One, that's it.
I think that's, that's a great variable to think about when we're issuing conditions for permits, is what are the events in issuing, uh, time restrictions? I think that's, that's a good thing to, to think about.
Yeah, through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I think the bo- the board has a very robust proc- robust process on how we issue one-day licenses.
Yep.
Um, I think that, you know, some of the specifics that we've been hearing about, a new type of event i- is good, but I don't think that there's any reason for the board to change any of the way we do business with any, any one-day license. With the police and the fire chief weighing in on it.
Yep.
Um, with the board making sure that everybody is tip certified, and, um, I, we've been successful with the one-day permits we've given out. Um, I think the caveat to that is that, uh, I am not a fan of having, um, you know, alcohol on town property, so I think that was part of the discussion that we wanna have tonight. Um, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, uh, but other than that, I think if we stick with the policy that we have already for one-day licenses and listen to, uh, the professionals that guide us, such as the police and the fire chief. I think we, we will do well.
Thank you, and I'll also just ask, uh, going forward as we, uh, approach the reviews of, of these applications, as we do still reach out to other towns to see if, you know, they have any recommendations, uh, that they would typically give with an application or, uh, uh, of an approval, or anything, any, any other pitfalls.
Um, if I can say something, I'm Kimberly Glynnstein, I'm the office manager from Treehouse, and I'm here just in case anyone had any questions and processes, and as Rob was saying, we have, um. Had events like this in the town of Munson, so if, if anyone can speak on how, uh, we handle these kinda situations, Munson is definitely the right town to speak to. Um, between the town administrator and the chief of police over there, um, and the fire department, we've been very proactive in keeping events like this very under control. Um, we have a lot of processes and procedures in place, when we're in the town of Munson, we do our own five K, and we have it in Munson, and we've got police detail, we have EMTs on hand, uh, you know, it's, it's a very, very controlled environment, which I think is important for the town and for the safety of everybody. Um, but dealing with the chief and, and, uh, the fire chief as well, uh, we've had a few discussions, and they seem to agree with all of our processes and procedures as well, so if anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, and thank you for taking time to be here too.
Of course, absolutely.
Any more questions or discussions on this?
No.
So I think the, uh, the path forward is just, you know, doing our research, making sure we're doing everything correct, and, and trusting our, uh, our experts to make the right decisions.
And, and to review the, uh, the one-day liquor license when it comes through, as we do all others.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you for the direction.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. I might run my first five K.
Five miles, Joe. Five miles, Joe, sorry.
Five miles?
It'll be person at the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be there in time for the parade.
That's about when I would finish.
You'd be taking mine.
Oh, and is Chief, is he for this?
Um, yes, the chief is going on the next one.
Chief? Chief Maxfield, we're about to go to our next item, and involves you as well, so.
Just hugging Kathleen.
We'll now move back to new business, I am number four for traffic details on page fifty-seven, Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir, attached is a memo from Chief Maxfield stating that with several water projects commencing soon and continuing through the main remainder of the year, as well as other venues. It will increase the need for more detailed officers to ensure coverage of, um, all detail requests. They are in the process of enhancing their auxiliary police unit, which will take a few months, and they are in need of, uh, in the interim. He's requesting from the board the ability to hire qualified retired law enforcement officers to work these traffic details. The advantage of hiring retired career police officers is that they are already trained, and they bring a wealth of experience and knowledge at no expense to the town of Charlton. This position is volunteer, as is the current auxiliary police unit, they would be also compensated like the auxiliaries at the regular police detail rates when working traffic details for outside vendors. The difference between the auxiliary officer and a traffic controller is that the eight-hour-per-month volunteer service component required of the auxiliary would be waived for the traffic controller position. He has provided a summary with the requirements and duties of those he would bring forward to be appointed as traffic controllers, I would recommend the board approve his request.
Thank you, Ms. Craver, Chief?
Thank you, um, as Ms. Craver said, um, w- we're not gonna have enough bodies, and, you know, uh, back to the whole detail billing requirement, I would rather bring people in, uh, that run through our payroll than to try to bring officers from out of town. Uh, so, so that we're complicating detail billing, we're, we're not going there again, so, um, there are a lot of, uh, uh, retired law enforcement officers in the area, um, I see them in chiefs meetings and that kinda thing. Um, you know, who would, would, uh, would come in and do, you know, traffic details when everybody else is, is unavailable, uh, and it's about public safety and, and basically control of, uh, the detail billing, so that's why I'm asking.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Mr. Singer?
Um, I just wanna say thank you, I think it's a proactive and creative solution that you've put forth.
Thank you.
It's nice to see.
I, uh, Chief, I assume that other towns do this as well?
Yes, I, I actually stole this from Tony Sad in Oxford, uh, so, just basically changed a few words and put Charlton, so, uh, give credit where credit is due.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
Um, Chief, I, I'm assuming that we're just, we're giving you the authority to appoint these people, you're not gonna bring everybody in front of us?
Uh, I, if, if you would like to, sir, I, I was going to ask that if the board wanted to appoint, uh, I, I don't know, it has to be formal, as, you know, people would have to come and get sworn.
If you do the auxiliary, we would bring them for you, we can just put together a list.
I can just put together a list, I don't think that, you know, yeah.
He's looking for the position.
Okay.
Uh, um, I can tell you that.
Ms. Noble?
I've been traveling, you know, back and forth through Oxford, and they've been redoing their water lines, so I see what Chief Sad has done, every day, twice a day, actually.
Yeah.
Um, and these, these guys know what they're doing, they're very good, they keep the traffic flowing, they're very competent, they're, they're the right people for the job.
Yes, ma'am.
So she's saying she wants you to steal the Oxford ones.
Well, I'm just saying.
Well, as a matter of fact, uh, Chief Hasset, uh, Mike Hasset is, I have in mind, uh, so I've talked to him, so, uh, among a few others, so, uh, we're, we're not above stealing other people's talent.
Good.
Ma'am, yeah, absolutely.
Mr. McGrath?
Through the chair, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the chief's request for the position of traffic controller, as explained in his summary, with the duties and uniform and equipment.
Second. Thank you, a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll move to a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I have some, if I may.
Sure.
Um, I have something, I think it's in my TA report, but since the chief is here, in case you have any questions. Um, at the last meeting, at when we had gone through the budget, um, there were some comments about training and Milo, um, worked with the chief, there is money in his budget now for Milo, as well as he can meet all of his mandatory training requirements.
She, she gave me extra money. Just saying.
So I, I think.
Pending town meeting.
Sure, yeah, pending town meeting, yes, sir.
And you guys, I gotta get through that.
Yeah.
With you guys.
And FinCom, and us.
Um, I think that this is really a, you know, kind of clapping cheering moment, that we've gotten to the point to be able to fully fund, um, the training that, that we've required. You have, we've always been a support, you have, the finance committee has always been support, in support of the, the police, and not always had the resources to do the things that, you know, we wanted to get done, so. Just think it's good to say that.
For, for the first time in twenty years, uh, if I may, through the chair, um, uh, for the first time in twenty years, uh, we're doing, uh, not only the minimum mandates, uh, but there's the Milo and, and some other training, uh, professional development, and, uh, and we're excited about it, so, and we thank you, yes.
Mr. Singer?
No, I mean, I just wanna point out, I know there's a lot of people involved, and, and since Ms. Craver brought it up, and the chief is here, we'll point out that it, it, it makes me my opinion, you've done an outstanding job. I think you've brought leadership to this department, you've brought accountability to this department, creativity, solutions, and the Milo training and the, the details are just more examples of why you were the right person for this job.
Thank you.
And I'm proud of you, our chief.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm humbled, thank you.
And we're discussing on that? Chief, thank you for that. Robin, thank you, and Mr. Singer, thank you for bringing that up, uh, at our last meeting.
Thank you, Chief. Am I excused?
Yep.
Thank you.
He's not gonna call your name again.
Yes?
We had, had a quick conversation, and I just wanna make sure the board's aware. At one point, um, because of the police details, the police department had stopped allowing our police officers to go to other towns. I believe you reinstated that now, so that they are allowed to go.
No, um, so, uh, I'll be brief. So, uh, on the subject of Tony Sad, um, the Charlton Road pro- uh, project, um, they were in a bind, they need bodies, uh, so I allowed, uh, regular officers, should they choose, to go and, and, uh, help Chief Sad out, because many of our residents have used that as a thoroughfare. Um, I, to date, I don't know, is if any have actually worked it. Uh, we did have one other issue on Route twenty, um, in front of the John Dale, when a pole got hit, and, uh, Mass D O T in that grid, and it was late in the afternoon, all called looking for bodies. So we, we go to public safety first, and we worry about how to pay for it after that, but, um, that's all set, so...
Just wanted to make sure you were aware, so if you saw our officers in another town.
Yeah, only in Oxford, and only our full timers.
Mr. McGrath?
Through the, through the chair. Um, Chief, just, uh, the way, uh, a lot of departments operate that, when you, when you get a call, like, from, from, um, Mass Highway for, for, you know, Mass D O T for, for those things, is we, they usually build the towing company, because then the towing company is going to go after the insurance company for the details. So just, I don't know if you've done that before, or...
Uh, honestly, sir, you'd have to ask Mara.
Mara, she's the expert.
She's the expert at Philly, yeah, but, but, uh, she is, she's doing outstanding. Um, we, so, Mass D O T, we've never had a problem, um, and, uh, as a matter of fact, I believe it was your context, sir, that, uh, we even got back money. So we can build them directly regardless of where we work, same thing with Nat Grid, uh, but sometimes, uh, they wanna go through the town where the, the problem is, and sometimes that can be tricky, 'cause guys are standing in Charlton diverting traffic, but they being paid by Oxford, so... Uh, but in that sense, like I said, that's all cleaned up, and everything's been billed, and, and, but, but again, only the, the full-time officers can work outside, and, and at this point, only in Oxford. Uh, auxiliary officers, if they wanna work in Oxford, they can go get hired in Oxford, but, um, we're not revisiting...
And they, and Chief, can, can they be hired by, by two departments at once?
Yeah, it, it's, I don't see it as a conflict, because they volunteers in, in both towns, but, um, we're, we're just not gonna revisit that, uh, because it creates a billing nightmare, so...
And I just wanna, um, compliment the chief for putting things in process to be able to keep us moving forward. So when he sees something, he stops it, looks at it, creates a process, and goes forward, and that's what he's done in this situation.
Thank you. Ms. Graber, anything else?
No.
Are you sure?
Not until he stands up anyway. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Thank you for everything. All right, with that, we'll move to our fifth item under new business, on page sixty-one, that's the reorganization of the board. It's that time of year again. Ms. Graber?
Yes, sir. Per the town's bylaws, section fifty dash seven, organization, the selectmen within seven days after each annual election shall meet elected chairperson and otherwise organize, and fix the time and place of the regular meetings. They shall adopt their own rules of procedure. In the past, once the chair is chosen, the present chair will finish the meeting, and the new chair would take effect the next day. What is the board's wishes?
Thank you, Ms. Graber. What are the board's, yes, Mr. Singer?
Chief, um, you know, based on previous conversations and the importance of keeping the, the positions moving around, I, I would like to nominate Mr. McGrath to be the chair for the coming year.
Thank you. I will, uh, open nominations for chair, and we have one for Mr. McGrath. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Can I motion to close nominations?
Some of.
Second.
Motion and second? Discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
We know that I'm fairly new to Charlton, and I learned something over the last week or so. It, it came to my attention that the officer positions on the board would rotate every single year, so that no one would be chair, vice chair, or clerk consecutively. Um, and in, uh, I thought about it for a long time, because there is value in the knowledge that comes from someone who has been at chair for several years, continuing on in that position. There is a wealth of knowledge that you cannot put a price on. But the flip side of that is that you never get a different perspective. You never get a different point of view. You never get a different set of objectives and goals. You never get different leadership, different leadership style. And frankly, because I'm new, I see the value in that. I see the value in, in instituting at least a mindset that says change is good. So no disrespect to you, Joe.
Is the board's wishes?
You're, you're a fantastic chair. That being said, I support Mr. Singer.
So, through, through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
Um, there's, uh, last year I was nominated for this position, and I, I respectfully declined because of my work situation. Um, when I was approached this, this time, this aft- late this afternoon about it, and I discussed it with, uh, individual board members, they, they said that they could live with that. My situation hasn't changed, um, but if that's the board's wishes, I will accept it. Um, just, I'm going to be candid, be- because of my job, I will miss some meetings.
Right, motion. Yes, Mr. Singer?
If we're still on a discussion.
We are in discussion, then closing the nominations.
Okay, so just to Ms. Noble's point, um, I do agree, and I think that Joe has, uh, has served this board and his community as the chair very well. But we don't lose his knowledge, he's still on the board, we still get to enjoy his company and his knowledge and his participation. But I do agree, it should move. I think, and I think the last five years, we've had two, maybe two chairs. And I think it's, it needs to move, especially give new board members opportunities to have those roles. I've been blessed, I've got to sit in every seat, from member to clerk to vice chair and chair. Everyone should have those opportunities. So I, I do thank Joe, I think he's done a wonderful job for this board and the community, but we need to give everyone a chance to, to, to take those roles.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, is the vote on to close nominations. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Uh, we have one nomination, um, mo- uh, motion to accept Mr. McGrath as chair.
Some of.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Chair votes aye, motion passes. This will take, uh, all changes in officers will take effect next meeting.
Actually tomorrow.
Will take effect tomorrow. Uh, nominations for vice chair?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I nominate Devon Noble as vice chair.
Second.
Motion is second. Uh, are there any other nominations? Motion to close nominations?
Some of.
Second. Motion second to close nominations, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Singer?
So I go back to the importance of moving, and to Ms. Noble's point about different perspectives. I think I've only sat with Ms. Noble for a short period of time, but I think she has brought well-thought-out solutions, professional intelligence, and, uh, I think she's added a lot, I think she'll do and serve the board's community very well in her role of vice chair.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Seeing none for the discussion, all in favor closing the nominations, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Um, I mean, uh, vote, um, motion to accept Ms. Noble as vice chair.
Some, sorry, we're voting?
Yes, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Nominations for clerk?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Singer?
As was done to me, the first time I ever got elected as selectman, I will nominate Ms. Speewack to be clerk.
I will second that.
Motion is second, discussion? Uh, is, are there any, any other nominations?
Well.
My first year as selectman, you're clerk now, I'm like, okay.
All right, seeing no nominations, motion to close nominations?
Some of.
Second. Motion second to close nominations, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes, and finally, uh, accept, uh, the cl- um, Ms. Speewack as clerk.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Sandbag.
Good job.
Wonderful. All right, now on to old business. Update on the toll roads held. Ms. Graber, page sixty-three.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I'd just like to say one thing, um, about your, your tenure as chair. I think that you have run the meetings fair and equitably. I think that you've given everybody their chance to speak. You've been unbiased in the way that you've handled the meetings, um, and that you have, uh, always put the town first in, in the way that you conducted yourself, and, um, and have done honor to the board of selectmen with the way that you've run it, so... I can only, I can only...
I, I feel like you're, it, it's, I feel like...
A eulogy? But, uh, Joe, you did a...
I'm not going anywhere.
No, but you did a good job in, in, uh, I mean, you had big shoes to fill.
I would also point out, Mr. Chair, based, you know, we've had a lot of years, but I will say that I agree with Mr., uh, McGrath. I would also point out regarding the transition of power, I think that you handled that the same way you've handled your chairmanship, and that was with professionalism and dignity.
Thank you. Now for item number one under old business, update on... Ms. Graber?
Yes, sir. At the board's last meeting while reviewing a request for the toll road from the Charlton Lion, Lions Club, Ms. Noble asked us to review how many toll roads are set up, uh, for this year. For this year, there are two that have been approved, the Charlton's Lions Club for May nineteenth, and the Ribbon Rockettes for May fifth. In two thousand and seventeen, our four toll roads were approved, the Charlton Lions Club, May sixth, the Ribbon Rockettes, May fifth, the Firefighters Association, June third, and the Knights of Columbus, October seventh. If it is helpful to the board, the two held in May have always run close to each other, and we have never received any complaints for such. Uh, they are big fundraisers, they use to help with their causes.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the board?
Thank you. Through the chair?
Yep.
Thank you for providing this information, it's very helpful to actually see the dates on paper. Um, now, looking at it, I can see that, you know, the two toll roads are a couple of weeks apart, and there, there's only four that happen the entire year. It's not really an issue, but it's good to have it on paper, so thank you for doing that.
Well, you're welcome, and, uh, Mary put the, did the research to pull it together for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Classic Mary.
Always.
All right, seeing no action on that, we'll move to our, uh, third item, we're going to pass over the senior center, as it was rescinded by the original, um...
No.
Senior center?
Senior center?
That we're passing over. Sure, all right, uh, we'll move to item number two under old business, that's the senior center, uh, for an update. Ms. Graber?
At the all boards', uh, meeting, there was discussion regarding the senior center opening on Fridays. The council on aging voted at their meeting on May second not to pursue Friday openings at this time. See, I just had to say that. They will make the seniors aware of the neighboring centers that are open on Fridays, so they can utilize them. An ongoing posting on the My Senior Center monitor will be implemented and remind all of these options. Menus from other centers are available online and can be printed out and placed in the senior center.
But they did have extensive conversation about that, and they chose not to go forward.
And thank you for looking into, I know that was brought up, um, during that meeting, and just always good to have a follow-through.
Yes.
Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, we will now move on to item number three under old business, as the annual town meeting, the town meeting warrant with motions. Now, so I see, uh, the moderator is also with us in the audience. Thank you.
What you have before you is the dra- um, the draft motions, and, um, the finance committee will also be meeting tomorrow night and going through their motions. So, um, there may be a few things that are outliers, but nothing I don't think that will change significantly. There we go. So, Article one is the election, there's no motion required, um, as that's already happened. Town reports, sponsor, um, the board of selectmen, you generally, uh, this is the neg- the first few, as you know, are generally housekeeping, and Article two is housekeeping. So you would make a motion to, uh, support the article?
Right, so we'll take a, uh...
Do you wanna take them on at its time?
Through Article two, what are the board's wishes of, um, uh, supporting Article two?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I make a motion that we support Article two.
Second.
Thank you, motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
Oh, I make a motion, no, I, I...
Chair passed, uh, the motion passes, uh, Article three?
Through the chair, I make a motion that we, uh, approve Article three as, support, rather.
Yeah, motion to support Article three, any dis- uh, the mo- our motion to support the motion for Article three. All right, motion, uh, uh, motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article four?
Article four is an appropriation of funds for unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year. The motion has, um, seven hundred forty-seven dollars and ten cents, um, from the F Y, um, un- unemployment, um, account to Mass Department of Unemployment Assistance. What happened is we didn't receive this bill until later. I think the, um, finance director had talked about, we had gone back and taken a look at some of the back pieces, so, um, they did have me- money in their budget if they had received this, so it would only be a majority vote needed.
Thank you. What are the board's wishes of supporting the motion for Article four?
Through the chair?
Ms. Noble?
I make a motion that we support Article four.
Second.
Thank you, motion is second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article five?
Article five is our inter-intra-departmental transfers for F Y eighteen. So we have, um, F Y eighteen conservation expenses, um, one, one is to pay expenses for two hundred, uh, two thousand, five hundred from the wetlands protection. Uh, this has been, we, our accountant, previous accountant before would just make the entries. Um, our finance director is much more comfortable making these actual entries, and then in going forward in the budget, we will actually be, um, to- making transfers as it is a new revenue towards the budget that we'll be paying for this. Um, and she, uh, you'll notice also that, uh, the finance director has provided account numbers. Before, as we were a smaller town, we would, um, we'd call the same account, maybe a couple of different things, but because the town accountant was so intimate with all of these funds, she knew where they went. So we're trying to consolidate again and, and use the, um, the account numbers. The next one is F Y eighteen conservation expenses to pay expenses, this is from the waterways improvement for two hundred dollars. Matching grants, um, to the following accounts, matching grants, match for state and federal grants, thirty thousand from the overlay surplus, in anticipation of writing some grants. Um, senior center improvements, equipment improvements and, uh, equipment, three thousand eight hundred fifty-seven from the senior center carpet replacement. Um, if you remember when they were, the C, Council on Aging did their budget, they were asking if they could, they had monies left over from the carpet replacement, and they, um, wanted to provide some equipment for technology, so, um. F Y eighteen energy utilities, we have a deficit in our electric- electrical for twenty-five thousand dollars from the Worcester County Retirement. Um, training, various trainings for departments, twenty-five thousand, I had talked about this as one of the initiatives that we were trying to do, so that people in the town hall, um, as well as the other larger departments outside, if they run out of training money, they can come back. This will be housed, um, within the H R department, and this will be coming from municipal building expenses. And F Y eighteen fire department wages, um, to that account from their uniform account, um, for uniforms, allowances for new hires, and the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. What are these board's wishes on supporting the motion for Article five?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I make a motion that we support Article five.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article six, the big one?
Would you like me to read?
Nope.
Okay.
Yep. Or whatever you need to say about it.
Um, again, you'll, you'll see a few, a couple of different things. We've added in the wetlands protection, so we're tra- making that transfer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're adding in the cable, and you'll see R R F A, this is a first time we've used these to designate that there, it's a rece- reserve, a receipts reserved fund appropriation.
Mm-hmm.
So these will be transferred.
And that's a, uh, um, municipal monetization thing, right?
Restri- receipts reserved for, um, appropriation is what it is. So, um... So, we are proposing in this article, seven hundred and fifty thousand be transferred from the ambulance fund, which is an additional hundred thousand. Three thousand to be transferred from the sale of cemetery lots. Twenty-six thousand, six hundred and five to be transferred from Prindle Pond Dam, and that is the betterments that are coming in to pay for the debt. Fifteen thousand to be transferred from the Wetlands Protection Act. Ninety thousand to be transferred from the cable, to pay for the cables. Nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-two from the fund balance reserved for bond premiums, and twenty-seven million, seven hundred and twenty-one, eight hundred, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight to be raised by taxation.
Thank you. What are these board's wishes of supporting the motion for Article six?
Through the chair?
Ms. Noble?
I make a motion that we support Article six.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article eight?
Seven?
Article seven, let me spell.
Seven is the Water Department Enterprise Fund?
Oh, there it is.
This is a balanced budget.
What is the board's wishes of supporting the motion for Article seven?
Make a motion that we support Article seven.
One of the.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, Ms. Graber?
For the purposes of, of discussion, the Finance Director has made an adjustment in the presentation. Again, you will see the account numbers, which were not in there before, and you will also notice on the side, there'll be asterisks. And what we're doing is each item being marked with an asterisk, being considered as a separate appropriation. So, they're not voting the individual, they're voting the, the totals for personnel and expenses the same way that you've been doing this all along. Just wanted you to, to see the, that we've put the asterisk, so it'll be a little easier for people to see that.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the motion?
Just a quick question. Robin, under Superintendent's salary, twenty-seventeen voted budget thirteen thousand, twenty-eighteen voted budget a hundred and thirteen thousand, is that a?
No, it's not, sir. That's how much they had put in that because we hadn't hired someone yet, and we didn't know the skills and the education and the experience. So, for FY nineteen, that is the amount.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article eight?
Same as the sewer?
Thank you. What are the board's wishes of supporting, supporting the motion for Article eight?
Through the chair.
Ms. McGrath?
I make a motion we support Article eight.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes.
And this, this was Superintendent Borrier's first budget, and I'd just like to do a shout out that he did a good job working with the Finance Director. They did, they did well. Article nine is a transfer of funds to and from stabilization fund account, and what we have is transferring the seventy thousand from the Millennium to the stabilization fund, which we do every, every annual. And FY eighteen, snow and ice budget, there's a deficit there. We're carrying two hundred and fifty thousand. If we have to make any difference, we'll look at that, continue to look at that in, in the recap sheet or in October.
Through the chair.
Ms. McGrath?
I make a motion that we support Article nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just one.
Ms. Noble?
That quarter of a million, is that because of the hard winter we had?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I think it was still here last week.
I think you're right.
Patriots today.
Right, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Article ten?
The next is capital items and related contracts, and we have several entries here of the Board of Health landfill monitoring and mitigation for a hundred and ten thousand from stabilization. This is an issue now. This morning, I met with DEP out on the old dump. We're going to be required to, and you know that we have had contamination there, had some hits. We're doing some testing. We've been doing monthly, quarterly testing. We're working with them now on a closure plan, which I'm kind of excited about, actually. But until we know what the, the regular budget requirements for monitoring, because this also will include monitoring of the cap landfill, I'm recommending that we use capital monies now until we find out exactly what that annual cost will be, and then next year, we'll come back to you and talk about putting that annual cost in the Board of Health's budget on a regular basis. Recreation, ADA compliance recreational fields, fifteen thousand from stabilization. And the next three are from recreation and conservation from Todd Road. I did have the conversation with him on these three, on whether or not we could wait until, as we usually do capital in October, but because it's the beginning of the season, and these are all related to being kind of outside, and we, we really should be doing it now. So, the ADA compliance recreational fields, the division, the state has come to us and said, you need to take care of this. So, this is fifteen thousand, and then we have Little Nugget Dam improvements for twenty thousand, and then Fay Mountain Farm, windows and doors for twenty thousand.
Thank you. What are the board's wishes?
I make a motion that we support Article ten.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article eleven, Cemetery Perpetual Care.
Article eleven is a, kind of a housekeeping. We have this every year, and the amount to accept is twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Through the chair, I make a recommendation that we support Article eleven.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article twelve, police outside detail.
Yes, sir. This is to see if the town will vote to raise an amount. So, the motion is actually to move an amount of a hundred and nine thousand dollars from stabilization to be transferred to the police detail account.
Ms. Graber, question. Usually, we group all the stabilizations together. Is there a reason why? Is it separate just for transparency sake?
Yes, sir.
Transparency sake?
Yes.
What are the board's wishes then for supporting Article?
That's an accident.
Through the chair, I make a motion that we support Article twelve.
Second. Thank you. Motion is second. Discussion? Looks like we already approved it.
Well, that's a typo.
Any further discussion?
Subliminal.
Through the chair.
Ms. McGrath?
I, I would just like to make, make sure that people understand that this is from many, many previous years, that is uncollectible.
Yes.
And, and the policy and procedures now are admirable that the chief has put in place and functioning.
Any further discussion on Article twelve? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article thirteen, personal bylaw amendment, classification plan update. Ms. Graber?
Yes, this is adding to the classification plan of facilities technician and assistant town accountant, which you have already filled those positions mid-year. So, you would be moving to accept Article thirteen as printed.
Thank you. What are the board's wishes of supporting Article thirteen's motion?
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article fourteen, special legislation. Ms. Graber?
Yes, sir. This is special legislation to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint alternate Conservation Commission members. The Conservation Commission asked for alternate members when we did the research. If you remember, we needed a legislative act. So, this is to go to the legislature and get that special act. The motion is just to move that the Article fourteen be accepted as printed.
Ms. McGrath?
Through the chair. I make a motion that we support Article fourteen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article fifteen?
Yes, sir. This is a personnel bylaw amendment for Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. We are already subject to that. The Personnel Board has submitted and would like to have it codified within our personnel bylaws, so people are all, are aware of it, and that there's a policy. So, the motion would be to accept Article fifteen as printed.
What are the board's wishes of supporting the motion for Article fifteen?
Through the chair.
Ms. McGrath?
I make a motion that we support Article fifteen.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article sixteen, water betterment interest.
Yes, as you know, Article sixteen is a water betterment interest repayment from the water betterment. You had some citizens come before you and request that that money also be returned, reimbursed. The motion is, I move that the amount of ninety-six thousand be transferred from the water repayment for debt fund to the water committed interest refund fund, and be appropriated for the purpose of reimbursing landowners for committed interest payments paid on water betterments committed on October fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you. What are the board's wishes?
Through the chair.
Ms. McGrath?
I make a motion that we support Article sixteen.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article seventeen, revolving funds.
Yes, sir. Revolving funds, this is another standard article that we have every annual. It's reauthorizing the revolving funds. It also provides the revolving fund, the department or the board that's authorized to spend from the fund, the fees and charges, the receipts that can go into the fund, the program or activity, and what they can do with the fund, as well as any restrictions or conditions.
Thank you. What are the board's wishes for supporting Article seventeen's motion?
Through the chair?
Ms. Noble?
I make a motion that we support Article seventeen, revolving funds.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion?
Through the chair.
Ms. McGrath?
I can remember when I was the chairman of the planning board, that we would run somewhere a balance in the, in the revolving fund of somewhere sixty, seventy, sometimes eighty thousand dollars. And I think that the way we manage the revolving funds now is much better for the town.
Yes.
Thank you. Municipal monetization bill. Any further discussion for Article seventeen? Seeing none, move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article eighteen?
Article eighteen is the new public safety building complex, design and land purchase. And that, this motion has shifted a little bit from the last time we talked. Just to give you a little bit of background, the committee has been meeting on a regular basis. Selectman McGrath is part of that committee also. We have negotiated with the Overlook, the Sonic Home, actually, they're rebranding from the Sonic Home to Overlook, so I'm, I'm going to try to remind myself to say Overlook instead of the Sonic Home. Overlook a portion of their property across the street. We have a known amount, which is, I'm here somewhere. It's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. We have, Jeff Alberti, our consultant, has done a depiction, so at town meeting, we will actually be able to have a picture of what they're looking for. We are moving forward again because we want to create some economies of scale by combining the police and fire station. This motion would, and I'm saying this much for you, as anyone that's watching the TV wondering about what's, what this article is about. So, we're trying to save economies of scale by combining the police and fire buildings together. We do know that for police, that building is becoming a bit adequate for that. They're expanding. And we're, we're also very actively looking at what a reuse of that building is, so I don't want anyone to think that somehow that building will disappear and we'll say, you know. But there is some very positive. The town is growing. We need additional space, and we're looking at a plan. So, regarding the funding component, at this time, and I will say that the property located address of ADA composite circle is the mailing address for their tax bills. I'm going to be researching on whether or not that would be the actual, so that may be the only thing changing. So, I would ask you, when you, if you vote to accept this, that you, you know, with any changes regarding that actual address, because now I've heard eighty-five A, the Sonic Home. One of the issues with the parcel is that it is still, it's never been carved out as a separate parcel from the main parcel, although it is across the street. So, we just want to make sure we identify it correctly. So, what we're asking for is to transfer and appropriate the following amounts, totaling six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the following accounts, two hundred thousand dollars from the sale of land, and four hundred and fifty from the ExxonMobil settlement. We had hoped for some other amounts. I don't have those donations signed yet, so I can't really put it in here. If by chance, before the twenty-first, those, those donations are completed, then I would just make an, I would check with you and make an adjustment. But at this time, I'm very comfortable with what we have. The Exxon monies are for capital. That was part of the debt repayment, because the town has been paying the water debt for many, many years and deferring capital, and this is an absolute appropriate use of this money, because if we weren't paying the debt, we might have been able to be paying for a fire station all these years. But we had to pick and choose, and for those of you who were here at the time, the fire station wanted a new building. At the same time, the highway department wanted a new building. The select, the select board at the time had asked the fire sta, the fire department to kind of stand down, because the greater need was that Quonset hut, because our highway workers were standing in inches of water. So, that's done. The other thing is what we'll have ready for you in town meeting is some information about our debt ratios. It looks like we're going to be completing all of our debt within five years. This will probably, by the time we go for borrowing, we may be able to have all our debt done. So, what we're trying to do is to look at the financing, to see if we can, one of the things we try to do is keep the debt so that it, it stays the same. So, when one drops off, we can take on another one and do more, the infrastructures that we need to, so we're continually improving. And so that there's not fluctuations in the tax rate. So, we are being cognizant of that. So, I apologize for so much information, but this is also, also an opportunity to just talk about what this does and doesn't do.
Mr. Singer?
So, a quick question now. If we appropriate those funds, the donations don't count prior, those funds are now.
These are the funds that we would take.
Right. So, now those funds are expended. Are the donations off the table, A, and if they're not off the table, and they just come later, we've already appropriated these funds, what happens? Does this money go back and they have the donation?
Those do.
Or is that money go then go back into that fund, and can we do that?
That's a very good question. I'm making preparations since, since those were not completed, if they're not completed before town meeting, that those donations will go towards construction. So, we will not lose it. It is going to be towards the building. And if we get money that's just for the land, then we will just utilize the Exxon money a little bit on the other, other way. But no, we will not lose that money.
Any further discussion?
It's, if I could just also add, certainly, we have concerns about that when we're getting a grant, because if you fund it, you know, it's much harder to get someone to give you a grant when you've already funded it. We have some promises of donations, so I don't see that making a difference.
What are the board's wishes for a motion to support Article eighteen?
Through the chair.
Ms. McGrath?
I make the motion that we support Article eighteen.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Article nineteen?
Article nineteen is authorize the Selectmen for and on behalf of the town to repair town-owned South Charlton Reservoir Dam to assess betterment and appropriate funds for same. As you remember, there was a previous warrant article that had appropriated the design. This is based, the funding mechanism for this is the same as we use for Prindle, which will be, it's the residents who will be paying for this through their betterment.
Thank you. Is there a motion to support Article nineteen?
Through the chair, I make a motion we support Article nineteen. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? I am a resident of South Charlton Reservoir. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair abstains, motion passes, four ayes, one abstention. Article twenty?
Thank you. General bylaw amendment easements to public utilities. So, if you look at Article twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, these are utility easements. So, we had.
So we had Article twenty-one and twenty-two come in for easements for, um, national grid. And what we realized was to give an easement, to put a poll on town property, we don't have the authority. We'd have to actually go to town meeting. So these are just utility easements. So what Article twenty does is allow the town to, um, allow the board, it, it codifies in the bylaw that the board of selectmen can grant, um, utility easements. So.
What are the board's wishes?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I make the motion that we support Article twenty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to support the motion for Article twenty. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
She would say motion passes. Twenty-one, does that make twenty-one moot then?
No, sir. Our recommendation is that you go ahead and, and continue this and vote these so that then they're done, and then we'll start after these. So the easement to national grid, uh, Mass Electric and Verizon for anchor and guy at the Union Cemetery, Sturbridge Road, Route twenty. And the motion is to approve the article as accepted and printed.
Thank you, chair. Mr. McGrath?
I make motion, we approve Article twenty-one.
Second. Thank you, motion and a second to, to support the article, uh, the motion for Article twenty-one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
She would say motion passes. Article twenty-two.
And Article twenty-two is for the utilities for underground and above-ground system for the new cell tower at the police station.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I make motion, we support Article twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you, motion two seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
She would say motion passes. Article twenty-three.
Twenty-three is acquisition of easements needed for Potter Village Road Bridge repair construction.
What are the board's wishes of supporting the motion for Article twenty-three?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I make motion that we support Article twenty-three.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
She would say motion passes. Article twenty-four.
Yes, sir. This is a vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one-ten A, to allow closed office hours on Saturday.
Thank you. What are the board's wishes of supporting the motion for Article twenty-five?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I make a motion that we support Article twenty-four.
Uh, twenty-four, I'm sorry, yes, twenty-four. Any discussion? Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Ms. Noble?
Um, has, is this supported by the personnel board? Have they been, I, I don't see them on here. They are not. We did not ask them. This is, um, town clerk and regarding posting.
Posting of meetings or?
Posting of meetings. Um, if it falls on us, a legal holiday, um, by statute, by contract, if there's a certain number of days. Would you like me to read it?
No, no, I, I can see, I'm just wondering why the personnel board didn't see this since it has to do with allowing office hours on Saturdays.
It's, it's mainly for the town clerk.
Okay.
If you would like me to ask them if they would provide a recommendation, I can forward the student and ask them.
Is there time before the, um, I don't know, but I can ask? If you would like that.
Couldn't we, we could always vote to approve this right before the meeting, approve it not right before town meeting?
Um, well, I'd, the only reason you don't have anything from them is because we didn't consider that as an issue. So, um, they have received the warrant. We believe they know what we have on. So my recommendation would not be to not hold up because what we wanna do is get these printed in the booklet.
Right.
But if you feel strongly.
And if warranted, they can always vote and then the town meeting floor give their recommendation.
Okay. That's sufficient.
Any further discussion on Article twenty-four? Seeing none, move to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 She would say motion passes. Article twenty-five.
Article twenty-five is the local option excise on retail marijuana sales. This is to see if the town will vote to accept Mass General Law, Chapter sixty-four and Section three, to impose an excise on retail sales of marijuana for adult use at the rate of three percent. Um, and the motion says I move that the town vote to accept Mass General Law, Chapter sixty-four and Section three, to impose a three percent excise tax referenced in the article, and that Article twenty-five and all other aspects be accepted as printed.
Thank you.
This is, um, equivalent to the meals tax?
Mm-hmm. Uh, through the chair.
Ms. Noble?
I move that we support Article twenty-five, the local option excise on retail marijuana sales.
Second.
Thank you, motion and a second. Any discussion on Article twenty-five? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 She would say motion passes. Article twenty-six.
Article twenty-six is the acceptance of Blackwell Drive, formerly known as Elaine Drive.
What are the board's wishes of, of, of supporting the motion for Article twenty-six?
Do we make a recommendation on this, or?
You did lay out the roads, so definitely you do.
So.
We had the board survey, I believe, in this town.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
Make motion, we, uh, support Article twenty-six.
Thank you, motion and a second to support Article twenty-six. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 She would say motion passes. Article twenty-seven.
Article twenty-seven is zoning, um, zoning by law amendment for marijuana establishments. And.
We don't take action on that?
No, you generally don't. You certainly could. Um, Article twenty-eight is the.
Would there, is the board want to take any action on Article twenty-seven?
Historically, that's bad for the planning board, right?
Yep. Seeing none, we'll move on to Article twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight is a proposed moratorium for the large-scale ground-mounted solar, and that is being sponsored by you.
What are the board's wishes of supporting the motion for Article twenty-eight?
Chair.
Mr. Singer?
I would like to support. Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 She would say motion passes. Article twenty-nine, it's a citizen position, so is thirty. And I think that's it?
That's it. Yeah, that's it.
All right. Any other discussion on the town meeting warrant? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports?
Just one.
Ms. Noble?
Uh, last Saturday, Fay Mountain Farm and the Rec Department and Conservation Commission held a free fishing day at the pond at Fay Mountain Farm. It was well attended by everyone from ages eight to eighty. And I wanna note that it was handicapped accessible as well. In addition to having the free fishing day, they also had the Highland Games at Fay Mountain Farm, and they'll be doing that again. It was a very interesting event. I certainly hope that all of you can come next time. Believe me, you'll, you won't regret it and you won't forget it either.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
Um, the Public Safety Building Committee, uh, we went and visited a couple of, uh, facilities that, uh, one was in Sharon and the other was in Medfield. And it was more to get a, a view of what not to do. We've been getting, uh, great information back from a lot of, lot of police and fire departments, but we actually put eyes on, um, what, what works well. Um, both facilities were well constructed. Um, they were, you would consider a hundred-year building. They, uh, they were, uh, they were actually made to be an integral part of the community. There's, uh, community space in the buildings, which, uh, we felt is, uh, is a, a very, uh, very important thing. And the other portion of it was the, uh, that the, um, the savings that they've received, uh, from using, uh, the same heating systems. You know, all, all the shared items that can be shared between both departments. Um, so it was very good. You know, you, you, you hear a lot, you read a lot, but it's always good to see it. And, uh, we have another, uh, visitation tomorrow at Holden, I believe. I wanna say it was nine o'clock, but I'll have to check my email, so.
Wow.
Anyway.
Goodness, you guys are doing your research.
Oh, yeah.
I like the idea of having community space within the building.
The, both, both Sharon and Medfield had, um, Medfield especially. They had, uh, uh, three or four big community rooms, um, that were available. They've, have found that the, uh, community likes being there rather than going over to the town hall because it was more of a modern space.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it was designed for that. Um, so it was, it was interesting.
Yeah.
Any other committee reports? Thank you for those. Um, now move on to the student select person's report. Ms. Kordowski?
Thank you. Um, this Thursday, May tenth, will be Shepherd Hills Annual Mock Car Crash, where seniors get called outside and student actors play scene where a car crash has occurred. Um, it shows the importance of not drinking and driving, especially on prom night. Speaking of which, prom is May nineteenth, next Saturday, and the theme is cityscape, and it's from six to eleven. May eleventh, progress report grades for quarter four will be available for viewing. Um, this Friday at seven P.M. is the chorus and bands pop concert, and our show is Broadway themed. Tickets are ten dollars at the door. May sixteenth will be the music department seniors' last jam, where they perform one last song as their senior goodbye. Um, and May seventeenth to the twenty-fifth, seniors are taking their final exams. I also have some information on the mock town meeting. If you want me to report that.
Please do.
Uh, after meeting with Mr. Packard and Mr. Olson, they felt a little overwhelmed with, uh, the deadline of May twelfth because Mr. Desto originally wanted the event to occur before the actual town meeting. And they're requesting if it's okay with you guys that we move it to later, um, at the beginning of June, maybe. Uh, they approved of all the topics that we discussed in the document that I shared with you guys, and they're very excited. Once we pick a date, I will let you guys know ASAP. And I was also wondering, um, for planning purposes, who I should place at the position of, uh, head chair? Because I have to make pamphlets with your guys' information, and I might do, uh, student to, uh, personnel on the board, like a buddy system. So if you guys could let me know if it's gonna be Mr. McGrath or if it's gonna be Joe.
What are the board's wishes?
Um, what, what time will this be, do you think?
He said preferably nine A.M. We had talked about nine or twelve-thirty, and he said the nine will work better because of lunch.
What day was this again?
Sometime.
In June, we don't have a date yet.
I would not be able to make that, unfortunately.
I'll be able to make it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, and can we all participate in it?
Yes.
Or at least come and attend?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm planning for you guys to participate quite a bit, actually.
About this.
Yeah, I am too.
Is that everything?
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions for our student select person? Thank you, Ms. Kordowski. Now move on to the town ministries report. Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir. Um, I attended the two thousand and eighteen Economic Development Summit last week. The enthusiasm from the governor, Lieutenant Governor, and Secretary Ash made a big hit with the attendees when they talked about the future of economic development in Massachusetts. They talked about workforce development, private, uh, public-private partnerships and grants initiatives. I attended the workshop and talked about innovation, incubators for small startup companies. I have some ideas for possible partnerships with businesses in town. I'll be sharing with the EDC at their next meeting. Uh, regarding the senior lunch expo, I attended the senior lunch expo held on May third in Southridge. It was great to see how Charlton and Southridge work together to make sure there's sufficient heat fuel for seniors who need it. Elaine Mattress and Mike Tromley did a great job, along with the rest of the staff and sponsors. Police Department, actually, I just did that, so, well, he was here, so I don't think I need to go through that. Actually, at the board's last meeting, I was asked to speak with Chief Maxfield regarding a school resource officer for the Charlton Middle School firearms training and qualifying for the officers and Milo training. Um, we're, we talked about the, uh, training, qualifying, and Milo, um, and he's beginning discussions with the school regarding the school resource officer. We'll keep you apprised of the discussions. I also have a couple of others that I'd like to add. As I had mentioned, I went to DEP today. We've been talking about the old dump. And cap, encapsulating that, we actually have another issue that's been coming up. There's been a lot of emails back and forth about it, which is, um, students at Bay Path parking in the library. There's not enough parking up at Bay Path. So there, right now, Todd and Bay Path, recreation is an issue to have, the kids are parking down there. Um, it's not sponsored by Bay Path, um, but they're aware that they have been parking down there. So, you know, two or three cars might meet there and one student takes everybody up to the school. What I'd like to look at, and I'm gonna ask for some direction from the board if I can, is to try to move forward with the old dump and encapsulating it, and see if I can, um, work with DEP to put a parking lot there. It's not that far from Bay Path. We could have a conversation with Bay Path and see if they would wanna take over responsibility of the parking lot. It would also give us a parking lot on that side of town. And one of the things that you'll notice with, with towns, they'll plan open space, but oftentimes they forget to plan for public parking. So as we develop, we'll have some additional parking. It's a large space, so it could also be used for other things in town events, too.
So you're looking at this more than just as a, a, a Bay Path commuter lot, but more as a municipal parking lot?
Yes. And one of the things, if we cap it like landfill, um, it's much more expensive than if we work with them to, um, do something simple, encapsulate it, and then what we would be doing is putting a deed restriction that that's the only use that we would have for it. And I believe that there is precedent, certainly for Mass CLT has done this, um, when they've had contamination and issues.
Turn.
So I think it's the most cost-effective way, plus it produces a public benefit.
I think that's a great idea.
Turning a liability into advantage.
Yep.
Thank you.
Perfect. And, um, I also just wanted to let you know, I know we've already talked about the public safety building and I talked about meeting with, having a conversation with Overlook. Um, I did have a conversation with her, and we had done some brainstorming about, um, some of their needs. And as I've told you, I'm, I'm trying to work with some of the, starting to get out, talk with businesses on what they need. Um, and there were a couple of things that I think we could do that might help Overlook, um, and I'd like to just work on that now versus trying to roll that into some kind of negotiation over the price. So just to let you know some of the issues that they wanted, that one of the things they did ask about was a traffic light. And traffic lights are, are very expensive and very difficult, and I think they understand that. Um, but they do have some concerns about, um, their entrance coming in and out and what might happen with the added traffic of, um, public safety buildings, um, vehicles. They're already there anyway, and they acknowledge that, but we did have a conversation about it. They are working to rebrand their name from the Sonic Home. They're wanting to move more towards, uh, Overlook, um, and have that identified. Um, they have a company, so I'm actually going to be meeting with their branding company and try to help them find ways that they might be able to, to do that. One of the things they asked about that I, I think that it's easy for us to do is, one of the issues is signage. They've said that they've been trying to work with Mass CLT to get some signs on Route twenty. Um, we have signs pointing to Southbridge, but we don't have signs pointing people up to our own, um, facilities. So I'd like to pursue that with the board's approval, to try and get some signs on Route twenty.
Through the chair.
Ms. McGrath?
Um, permit, the permit department.
Okay.
They'll, uh, trying to think, we have to talk to, yeah. Chris Chambers.
Chamber?
Chambers, yes. And, um, barring that, maybe even copy Barry Lorian, um, on it. Barry's now the, uh, new, he was appointed the new District Three administrator.
Great. Congratulations. Okay, all right. Um, and also, would you approve a sign if we can put one down here? Well, twenty they want, but maybe down at the corner, when it comes on that name? Okay. Where the beer garden is going.
Rose Garden.
We had talked about their, they have some space that they're trying to utilize and rebrand. Um, and I've talked about working with them in exploring possibly some public-private partnerships. There's some other towns that have done some really great work and also heard a few things at the summit. So we've opened a conversation about that. Um, kind of really excited, and they're talking about maybe doing their master plan again. So we'd be involved with that. And we had a good talk about the skills and what they needed, job base. Um, the other thing we talked about was housing. One of the needs of Charlton is housing, and there's nobody, I know you brought that up.
Yeah.
Um, not necessarily looking to create subsidized housing, but how do we keep our teachers and our young people here? So we may have an opportunity to have some conversations with them about, um, some of their open space as not apartment, maybe apartments, maybe incubators, maybe do something. The other thing that they wanna do is to work on trying to get their hotel opened again. Um, and that, that's one of those places where I think we could do some possible public partner, private partnerships because it would certainly benefit the community. And if they could. And if they could get, bring back, open that place back up and also work with, um, catering and, you know, we lost a piece when, when that went out of business. So, um, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to work with them on that also.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any questions with the town administrator?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Singer?
Just a request, um, I know that we have discussed Milo qualifying, I'm glad that that's being handled. I would like to get regular updates on progress, even if there's none on the school resource officer, just to be sure it doesn't fall off already.
Any questions for the town administrator? Thank you, Ms. Craver. Is there any other business that was unknown at the time of posting? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Through the chair.
Mr. McGrath?
I make a motion that we enter executive session on the Mass General law, chapter thirty, section twenty-one. Number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, but to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, personnel contract. Number three, to discuss litigation strategy and up, or update with respect to Casella Hickman, five oh eight Gordon Lamansky. And number six, to consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate relative to the host agreement. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and to return to open session for any other business.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, uh, the chair does declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body, and it will be exiting executive session solely for the purpose of adjournment. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go by roll call vote, Mr. McGrath.
Aye.
Ms. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Ewak?
Aye.
Mr. Singer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now in executive session, eight twenty-six P M. Our next regular selectmen's meeting will be May twenty-second. Have a great night.